Good evening, welcome to the Board of Selectmen, August 28th. If you'll join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
In a moment of silence.
Yes, could I have a moment of silence, please? Good, you?
Good evening, everybody. We're missing one person tonight, which is John Cotton. He's been deployed to Maui to help with the rebuilding and cleanup. So we'll try to make it through without him tonight. We're going to start with public comment.
Good evening. My name is Reverend Nell Fields. I am the Minister of the Wacoit Congregational Church. I am going to read a letter I have written in support of the tribe's request for land adjacent to their cemetery. Dear Select Board, I write this letter in support of the Mashpee-Wampanoag tribes' request for a parcel of land to expand its burying grounds. Throughout history, various religions and cultures have established rituals that are of deep importance to them. This includes customs related to the final rites and resting place of the dead. Burial grounds are sacred. They not only represent one of the most revered religious rituals of a culture, but they also serve as an important marker of history. It is incumbent upon all of us to work with our neighbors, to help them to preserve and continue their traditions. While I do not live in Mashpee, many in our congregation do. I know that they would be supportive of the Mashpee-Wampanoag tribes' request as well. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ken DeBroski, 3 Grayfield Landing. I was going to give you an update on the work I've been doing, my little tax project, but I had a town manager was gracious enough to give me about 30 minutes of his time this afternoon, so we went through it.
One.
Huh?
One.
I was giving you the benefit of the doubt. So we'll, I think we're going to go down a certain path. We'll see if we can work something out, see where this takes us. But you should thank him because now you don't have to listen to me babble for another minute and a half.
Thank you.
All right, Richard DiSorato, 65 Shields Road. The Boston Globe recently published a story of what it takes to make a town alive and successful. What towns need to do, the article said, is to capitalize on the uniqueness of the town. Examples were Lexington and Concord with their Revolutionary War ties, Lowell with its Industrial Revolution, and textile mills in New Bedford with its railing history. Here in Mashpee, our uniqueness is our Wampanoag history and culture. This board has an excellent opportunity to show vision and leadership in supporting the transfer of the land and the so-called 12 acres to the tribe for the building of a Wampanoag village. This village can become the keystone in a unique pocket in Mashpee's history, all contained within a quarter-mile area in the middle of Mashpee Center. In this one area, all in the historic district, you have the Town Archives with Mashpee history on display and open for research of that history. You have the historic 1831 one-room schoolhouse. You have the Veterans Garden containing 25 honor stones of those from Mashpee who gave their lives for our country, from the Revolution of the War to the wars in Iraq and Afghanistan. You have the new war monument with the names 253 Mashpee men and women who left their homes here in Mashpee, went off to defend our country in time of war. In both sites, the vast majority were Wampanoag. In its long-range planning, the Mashpee Historical Commission is calling for a pathway of Mashpee history that would run a path from the community park to the community gardens containing a timeline through signage of Mashpee history. You will have the about-to-be-completed Mashpee Historic Signage Program with historic signage and photos of what this area used to be. You have the Wampanoag Museum with its excellent display of Wampanoag history and culture, located here along with the historic parsonage that is about to be restored. A Wampanoag village surrounding these sites gives us the opportunity to create an historic destination location for educational, local, and tourist learning experiences. I strongly urge the board to support that. Concerning the transfer of land at the Old Indian Burial Ground, for spiritual, religious, cultural, and historic reasons, we should do this. But more importantly, for the sense of community, this land should be transferred to the tribe because it is the right thing to do.
Thank you, Richard.
Hey, everybody. Thanks for hearing me out. I'm here to-
And just your address.
Oh, sorry, thanks. Pamela McCarthy, I live on Leamington Lane. I'm here to support the warrant articles. I'll keep it short and sweet, but basically, I think that respecting our Wampanoag friends and neighbors is always a good thing. I think that allowing them to expand the burial grounds can only be good for, you know, spiritual, cultural reasons. And the idea of having, in the second warrant article, a Wampanoag village, an historical, you know, a historical place for people to come and learn more about the tribe and the tribal history, is something that would be a real, in practical, in practical ways, a good draw for the town, right? It would bring people in. But also, I really feel like Mashpee has something that other towns on the Cape doesn't have. There is this very strong cultural identity that sets it apart, and I feel like we should just really encourage that and nurture it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm even shorter in this chair. Ava Costello, Santua Pond wrote, "Most of you know me as Chair of the Mashpee Historical Commission, but I'm here as a citizen of Mashpee." And I want to speak to both of the articles, I think 10 and 12, that were on the sample warrant. Both of them, I encourage the Select Board, as well as all the town meeting members in Mashpee, to support this article for a variety of reasons. The cemetery is a historical landmark, but beyond that, it's a place for families to go and be and visit with those who've come before them. Most of us all have within us a family cemetery or a place that we can go. The Old Indian Meeting House and that cemetery is another place for the Wampanoag tribe to go and to be with their ancestors. And I encourage the town to support them. I'm not as eloquent as the speakers who've come before me, but the feeling is there, and I really want you to consider what that would mean to the town, as well as to the tribe, to have that cemetery expanded. Regarding the living museum, I love the name, that it's a living museum. Most people think of museums as being sort of sanitized, but having a living representation of what was going on on this land in the 1700s, people can come and learn and to experience and to take that knowledge within their own hearts and in their own minds, and also to share it with others, is a unique experience the town has, and I hope they follow through on it. Thank you.
Jane Marie Stevenson, 135 Sampson's Mill Road. You're probably not surprised, dear, that I'm going to be adding to the comments already made. As I understand it, the Select Board does not have to vote on this because it's a petitioned article, but my point is to say that you are the leaders of this community, and I think that you will carry a lot of weight if you will actually support these petitioners in these two issues. Just to add a little bit to all the wonderful comments that have already been made, to which I agree, in terms of the burial ground issue, I would point out that we have made, a lot of us have made a concerted effort in all our committee meetings, in our committees and in our, in our conferences and events, to do a land acknowledgement, which is a step in the right direction. Those are words, and they're wonderful words, but I think now you have an opportunity to put this in action, to really show that you value what a land acknowledgement means and what this land means to us. Secondly, in terms of the historical proposal, I think it's absolutely wonderful, and I think it's needed, and I'm going to point two things. First of all, I have been in a home exchange program for 25 years. I have hosted people from all states and many, many countries in Europe, and I can tell you that when they visit my home, our home here in Mashpee, they're not here just to be on the beach. They are here for cultural experiences. They ask about that. I provide materials about our tribe and our community. This is really, really important. Just so you know, there's a real benefit to this. Likewise, when I do a home exchange, I go to Arizona, I go to New Mexico, and all the, in Utah. I actually go to some of these sites myself because I want to learn. So it's very, 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 I think, a real plus to be able to have something like this. And secondly, when I participated in the local comprehensive plan, that actually came up in one of our group discussions, and that was that we need to have a real sense of our identity, and somebody already addressed that. You know, our identity is, as a town, is tied around our tribal, our people. And the group wanted to be able to, to be able to do more about that, and this is a great, great opportunity to do that. So I hope that you use your influence to support that, and I myself will be asking the Mashpee Inclusion Diversity Committee to vote on this at the next meeting, to give permission for somebody from our committee to speak to this at the, at the town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Andrew McKelvey, 11 Menipshire Road in Mashpee. I'm here to talk about Article 10 tonight on your warrant, the Old Indian Cemetery here in Mashpee. You know, grief is a difficult thing. When someone passes away, you want to know that your dead are going to be buried in the proper and cultural way that you respect. I think it's important that this land be conveyed to the Select Board for disposal to the tribe as they see fit, and that they would consider a recommendation of Article 10 favorably for the, for the town meeting. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Kathy Lewis, 44 Juniper Drive. You may know me as the Chair of the School Committee, but tonight I'm speaking as a citizen. I just wanted to also lend my voice in support of the two articles that are before you as petition articles in support of the tribe. I know, again, like Ms. Stevenson said, you don't have to vote to recommend, but I think, as she also said, you do have a lot of influence in the town, and I think if you do lend your support to those two articles, it would go a very long way in town. That being said, the School Department, you know, we talk a lot about identity, and the school is beginning a living museum, in a sense, at the Quashnet School, where the children are working as part of the Indian Education Department to build, I believe it's going to be called the 13 Moons Exhibit, where they have built a Oetu in a protected, in one of the protected courtyards at Quashnet. And there, it goes through the seasons, and I know the students feel such pride, and I think that the town as a whole should be able to feel that pride. Our tribal neighbors should be able to feel that pride and have that ability to say, this is who we are. And I think a living museum is definitely the right step in that direction, and I also feel, you know, the burial ground expansion, kind of common sense in my mind. So again, thank you for your time, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay, communication and correspondence. We did get some communication today. It's an invitation from the Superintendent of School. We're invited to orientation tomorrow. The day begins at 8:30 at the Mashpee High School Auditorium, and she would like all of us to be there, if we can. New business, nothing, old business. Discussion and possible approval of November 7, 2023, special election hours. Town Clerk Debbie Kay.
I'm going to stand. I don't need to look any shorter than I am. So I sent you a memo last week regarding the hours. We have the ability to offer early voting in person at no cost, early voting by mail, cost is minimal, postage. So it is my belief, first of all, I don't see a big turnout on this, so I'm hoping that the Select Board will consider cutting back the election hours from 12 to 4 p.m. We are mandated to run an election for four hours. You have to start no later than noon time. So we are filling our requirements by running it for four hours. We don't have as much overtime, details, costs like that. I am not prepared to pay for this election because I didn't budget for another special election. So I'm trying to keep the cost down as much as possible. I figure the Wednesday before the election, we're going to have to be working anyway to pack up and get ready for the election on Tuesday. So I'm even willing to, you know, accommodate anybody who needs to vote early till 6:30 or 7 o'clock when we leave. That being said, I would ask for-
Rodney?
Any questions?
Any questions?
Obviously, this is a critical vote, and my only concern is, what about the person who doesn't get in early, who says on voting day, oh, I got to vote today, and can't get in before work or after work because of the hours? That's my only concern. Because I think last time, and correct me if I'm wrong, which I could be, but I think the last hours extended either beyond our closing hours and the usual business hours in the afternoon, so somebody could get in.
I don't have the paperwork with me, but I do remember looking at the numbers from last year. One precinct had one person come in between 6:00 and 8:00. You want me to stay open for 13 hours? I'll stay open for 13 hours, but I don't have the money for this. And I know I'll have to go to the Finance Committee. That's not the, that's not the issue. You may consider this a very important vote, and I'm not discrediting that. I'm saying that after 25 years, I don't expect to see a heavy turnout. So I'm willing to, I mean, 8:30 to 6:30 one day before the election, that's, that's 10 hours, right?
I certainly don't want to waste any taxpayer money on anything.
But we usually have, excuse me, we usually have a lot of people who run in at 7:00 when we normally used to open voting, before they go to work.
You want me to set the ballot for 13 hours? I'll run it for 13 hours.
Are we losing those people because we're not opening?
We're not going to lose those people because if they want to vote because of the importance of this article, they're going to vote at one of the three si-
But you're opening at 8:30.
The office?
Right.
We always open at 8:30.
Right, but they vote at 7:00 when we normally do election.
In the morning.
In the morning. So say they're leaving for Boston.
I'm also there till 6:30 at night.
Yeah, but you've got to remember, Debbie, if people are working in Boston, they leave at 7:00.
We have voting by mail.
Okay. Okay.
It's up to you. You want me to run it for 13 hours? I'll run it for 13 hours.
Okay. Thank you. Debbie, I appreciate some of your concerns, I do. I also am concerned that this is a very important election for the town, and if you could go to the Finance Committee, as everybody at this table, I'm cognizant of taxpayer money, I worry about that. But I think this is a very important election, and people get home late, they're accustomed to the polls being open. It's always a surprise, not everybody reads everything they see in the paper. I think it not to be open before people go to work and when they come home from work really leaves too much.
That's fine, that's fine. I, if you want it for 13 hours, it's 13 hours.
David?
I have to agree that I feel like, you know, people are, a lot of people are creatures of habit, and, you know, changing something, even if it's just once, the vote is an important vote.
But remember, I had a precinct that had one person come through, all right? I don't believe there's a need. It's your decision, however. You want it to go 13 hours, that's fine. I'll open at 7:00 a.m., I'll close at 8:00 p.m., I'll put in for the overtime for staffing and the details, that's fine. I was just trying to be financially proactive.
Understood. I just feel like, as far as the town goes, I don't, I want to avoid any blowback on, you know, why did you change hours? You know, I, I was deprived of my opportunity. I work in Boston, as Ms. Sherman said, and Michaela as well. Those are my concerns.
And I hear those concerns, Dave, but I'm, what I'm saying as the Town Clerk is, I am offering three venues to vote. There's no reason why somebody can't get a ballot one way or another, all right? I'm not, I'm not, it is what it is. If you want it from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., that's fine.
Tom?
I think it's a little bit late in the game to, to change it up a little bit. I think your, your ideas of cleaning it up financially is something that makes sense, but I think they need a little bit more advanced notice and get the voting done correctly.
I can't give them any more, more notice than now. I mean, it's not, it's easy to do. I mean, social media, we have all kinds of avenues to go down, but it's, it's, it's really not my call.
I understand the time. It is a lot of time to sit there when nobody comes in for just one vote, but it is an important vote for the town.
It's your, it's your decision.
All right.
It's fine.
Do I have a motion? I, I would move that we maintain the regular hours for November 7, opening at the regular time and closing at the regular time.
Second motion.
Planning Board for October 16, 2023, Town Meeting Warrant, Town Planner Evan Lehrer and Planning Board Chair Karen Faulkner.
Good evening.
Good evening. Karen Faulkner here with our Town Planner Evan Lehrer. And Evan, if you would start with covering what changes we made and why we made the changes.
I guess I'm going to, I'm going to focus on the tree, tree bylaw first. That's all right with the Board?
Oh, sorry. You want to do the tree bylaw?
Well, I'm not, I'm uncertain about which article we want to launch in, because that's the only article we, we've made changes to.
That's true. We should start with the flood claim.
Let me ask you, would you have a preference for me to go through the suggested changes to the zoning bylaw articles, or would you prefer I commence with the tree bylaw changes?
Whatever you decide is fine.
If it's okay, I'd like to go through the tree bylaw just because it's the mediest of them all.
Yes.
And it's the most substantive of all of our changes. It's going to be very simple for me to go through the suggested amendments that were contemplated by the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Building Commissioner to you last week, which I, I did see, and I'm confident we'll be able to affirm our recommendation. But as myself and the Chair noted to you back when we were here in the beginning of August, I think it was August 7th or so, I can't recall, a few weeks back, I had presented alongside Chair Faulkner the original tree bylaw submission, which after discussions with the DPW Director, we had identified some portions of the bylaw that really would have benefited from additional clarity. So in no way, shape, or form does the article, the tree preservation bylaw proposal before you today, impact the scope of the article. The scope of the article has remained unchanged throughout this town meeting cycle. What we wanted to do with this, with the changes that are presented alongside my August 7 memo, is to provide firm clarity relative to the purpose and intent of the bylaw, as well as just cleaning up some definitions and, and things of that nature. So I'd, I'd like it, if it's okay with the Board, to run through those changes alongside my August 7 memo. I do not know if you have the memo in front of you, but it's easy enough to follow along. And I framed this memo by, by the questions that were presented to me by the DPW Director. And so I'm just going to present to you those questions, and I'm going to provide you the responses that we've built into the draft. It was noted to me by the DPW Director in that the early draft of the tree preservation bylaw that was originally submitted to you for consideration had two definitions, if you will, kind of varying definitions, conflicting definitions in a way, of the term, quote-unquote, "building activity." We noted that there was a definition in the definition section of building activity, and then there was also a section in the applicability section of this bylaw that interchangeably used a definition that was similar but different. So for the purposes of clarity, we deleted this reference of building activity in the applicability section and merely refined the definition in the definition section to include all of the building activities that we had contemplated between those two sections. So there should be only, there is, there not should be, there is only one building activity definition, and that is clarified with absolute certainty in the definition section of the bylaw proposal before you. Additionally, the DPW Director noted to me that there was numerous references using the word "caliper." And caliper generally is utilized to describe the circumference of a tree, the tree trunk. And we, the Chair, Chair Faulkner and I had generally fallen on to utilizing the term diameter at breast height, meaning the, the diameter of a tree, four and a half feet above the ground. That is the definition. And so we didn't want to interchangeably use caliper and diameter at breast height. So to remove any confusion, we deleted all references to the word "caliper" as a means of measuring the tree and have- of measuring the tree and have replaced it with only diameter at breast height, or DBH. The next comment by the DPW Director did not result in any particular change to the article, so what I'm about to describe to you, it did not change in any way, but it's just for the purposes of clarity. She asked me, who determines what constitutes a hazardous tree? Hazardous trees are exempt from the provisions of this bylaw. So she wanted to know who determines that. It would be incumbent upon an applicant to the Planning Department for a tree preservation plan to have an arborist provide an opinion relative to the tree's hazardous nature, at which point, upon that application, we would affirm the arborist's opinion. We would go out and ensure that indeed this tree is hazardous and is exempt from the provisions of this bylaw. So it is not staff unilaterally deciding this, it's not the Planning Board, it's no other entity. It is a certified arborist who would submit, who would assert that they believe a tree on a subject property is hazardous and should be exempt for removal, at which point the Town Planner, myself, or designee would evaluate whether or not the tree meets the definition of hazardous following the arborist's assertion that it is so. Additionally, the DPW Director asked about our original definition of what a protected tree was. And so we wanted to be very, very clear about what a protected tree is. So in the definition section of the new draft, the newest proposal before you, we provided a table of species, both understory and overstory species, native and common to this area, that if six inches or more diameter at breast height, would be considered protected trees. So again, if it's one of those trees in that table, and it's six inches or larger, four and a half feet above the grade, it is a protected tree. There were questions about the applicability of this bylaw. Really, the question being, if I'm not doing a building activity, if I'm not building an addition, if I'm not building a new house, if I'm not constructing a subdivision, and I'm just an average homeowner who desires to do some yard maintenance and there's a, what would otherwise be considered a protected tree in my tree yard outside of the building, within the building setback areas, can I remove it? The answer is yes. This bylaw does not, it essentially exempts any tree activity that is not directly related to a building activity as defined in the definition section of the bylaw. So this bylaw is intended to incentivize the preservation and protection of trees during Further, the DPW Director had noted that in our building activities definition, we had contemplated any clearing or grading or any other site work within 12 months of a building permit or other building activity on the site, to which the DPW Director said, you know, "In all my experience issuing curb cut permits at the town of Mashpee, it's been my experience that there have been numerous property owners, two years or three years prior to pulling a building permit, that have cleared lots. Seems to be a loophole. How do you close that?" And so we deleted all references to clearing, quote, "12 months prior." And so to delete the 12 months prior required that additional exemption for a property owner. So we deleted the references to 12 months prior, so you can't strip a lot, you can't clear cut or grade such that it would be detrimental to protected trees if you're doing a building activity at any time prior to that building activity. So if you're planning on building a house four years from now, that's fine, and you want to clear cut your lot, that's fine too, if you comply or comport with the provisions of the bylaw that is proposed. And then if you're, again, the average homeowner, you would be exempt from those provisions if you are not conducting the building activity like I've previously described. The DPW Director was concerned that there wasn't a municipal exemption for the necessity for the town to perform tree work in any number of events, so we've proposed adding a municipal exemption, and it is included in the exemption section of the bylaw before The DPW Director further asked a question about a waiver section. There's a waiver section in this bylaw that essentially waives the provisions of the bylaw in the event of a natural disaster. This is essentially to allow for the clearing and removal of trees in the event that we've had a significant storm, and numerous trees have come down or broken or become potentially We wanted to, I affirmed to her that this is indeed the case. The purpose and intent of the waiver section is to allow for the removal of protected trees that may have been damaged by a weather event. There's no additional specificity that has been added to this particular section by way of that question. I just wanted to provide the clarity to you, and I've provided the same to the DPW Director. She also noted that the tree yard does not include the road right of way along the frontage for a property, which, again, is no changes as a result of that question, but I wanted just to affirm to you that the road layout is independent of the tree yard and anyone's particular property. So trees within the road layout are not governed by the provisions of this bylaw. She asked me what a tree save area was, and this is one of those situations like caliper was before. We had generally utilized the term "critical root zone." This is the area around the drip line of a tree that would need to be protected in the event of a construction activity to ensure the tree's survival. We have been favoring critical root zone and hadn't been using tree save area, so we deleted all the references, to which there were only a few of tree save area, and replaced that with critical root zone, or CRZ. And lastly, this is the last, I do promise you, we had, the bylaw contemplates a few mechanisms for mitigation if you desire to remove a protected tree. One is, you may replace that tree with half an inch diameter at breast height per one inch of diameter breast height protected tree removed. Or you could pay into a fund established for the purposes of tree preservation, protection, and beautify and enhance the town. And the DPW Director had identified, we probably need to speak to the Town Accountant in this regard, which we have done, and we have clarity relative to how the mechanism of collecting mitigation monies under this bylaw would operate. There have been slight semantic or, I guess, linguistic changes to how we title the tree fund. It is now the tree bylaw revenue account. It has a new definition and is contained in your most updated proposal. We did present these proposed changes to the Planning Board, who unanimously voted to affirm and present them to you. There are two suggested changes that were placed into the article as well that were not resultant from the DPW Director's comments, and I want to just point them out to you now. One, if you are in wetlands jurisdiction and you want to remove trees, you are subject to the review and approval by the Conservation Commission. And so we didn't want to make people go at this twice. So if you are in wetlands jurisdiction, you are exempt from the provisions of this bylaw on the expectation that you're going to the Conservation Commission for that review and approval. Second, the Planning Board often issues special permits for cluster subdivisions, and has for many years issued special permits for cluster subdivisions that have a unique set of dimensional criteria for the lots created. Meaning, instead of the general 15-foot side setbacks and 40-foot front, there's often a unique schedule of dimensional criteria that would apply to cluster subdivisions. So we wanted to ensure that if you are in a subdivision that has five-foot setbacks to the side and a 10-foot front setback, that your tree yard is consistent with the approval of the Planning Board. So we've included that language as well.
Thank you, Evan. Well, finally, this is the most worked-over bylaw I've ever been involved in. Of course, it's the only one, so. As I said last time when I was here, the genesis of this tree preservation bylaw was my driving by on Algonquin, and I saw clear cutting of this massive property in derogation of a stop work order that Dave Morris put up on that tree. And that was so upsetting to me, that I started looking around at neighbors, and I'm seeing a lot of clear cutting, I hear a lot of saws going off, and, you know, I can cite three or four that I know right now that were being clear cut. They're not protected, well, they may be protected, we may be under this bylaw. But think about it, you know, we're trying to make this town as beautiful as possible, and it's also how important trees are. And in this first paragraph here, it says, "Trees reduce energy consumption, provide shade, improve air quality, provide vital wildlife habitat, erosion control, reduce storm runoff, buffering noise pollution, and of course, increase values." You know, you can go into any town, there can be modest houses, but if you've got that tree coverage, and of course, if you have that canopy over the road, which we're not talking about now, but just trees, a neighborhood looks nice. And you go into an area where there are no trees, which we call a heat island, no trees, and everything looks so awful and so cold. So that's what we're trying to do, to keep this place beautiful. So I looked at a lot of bylaws all over the state, and I think we got the best of everything. We're reasonable, we're not running as fancy as Concord with, you know, the cost of the tree, the tree fund. I think we've done it very nicely. Do you remember that paperwork I gave you last time? Did anybody keep it?
I didn't. I couldn't bring it tonight.
Okay, that's good. An abundance of caution, I copied it. May I approach?
Yes, you may.
I know this took a lot of work, Karen. And you've taught us more about trees than I ever thought I'd, no. Okay, as I told you last time, when we started to do this, if you put the definitions on the left, and then the second page in the middle, and the third page to the right. This is really a verdict form. I've used this verdict form in my prior life, so I know it works. So hopefully it works for you in understanding it. Does this tree bylaw, tree preservation bylaw, apply to you? All right. First question, are you the owner of a lot or parcel of land in Mashpee? Okay, let's say you are. Say you're not. Say you stop, you know, you can say goodbye. You are? Okay, so we go to question two. Will there be work performed on your lot as defined by building activity? Well, on my copy, building activity is on the second page. All those items are under the bylaw as a building activity. So if you're on there, okay, it's a building activity. So now you go to question three. Do you have trees or a tree in your tree yard? If you look at this page here, you see the tree yard is what's marked out in green, and that's the setback. So in R3, R5, for example, it would be 40 feet setback in the front, 15 on each side, and 15 feet in the back. Okay, that's the tree. So whatever's in the middle there, where your house is, in the white area, that's fair game, you can do whatever you want with that. But we're talking just about the tree yard now. So you have a tree yard, and now you have to look at the height of the tree. Is it six inches or greater? Is it one of those protected trees that Evan mentioned? The protected trees are on that table, protected trees here like that. I think my pagination is different than yours. So the trees six inches or greater, and it's a, if it's an overstory tree, that means that the tree could grow 40 feet high. So if you have to replace an overstory tree, you have to replace it with another overstory tree. So, so yes, and the diameter at breast height, we've already discussed that before, is the circumference in inches divided by pi equals so many inches of diameter breast height. And as I said to you last time, I think I said, you don't have to know the math about this. This is arborist language. They deal with these words all the time. So you just have to understand the concept of what we're trying to do here, I think. Now, so are you intending, number four, are you intending to have protected trees in the tree yard cut down? No, I'm not cutting any down. Okay, stop. If yes, go to question five. Do you want to replace the protected trees with new trees by purchasing and installing new trees rather than paying into the tree bylaw revenue account? That's the new name for the tree fund. Yes, I want to replace them. So now we go to number six. And this is the math part, which I just described. You know, you want to, you want to measure the tree, you take a tape measure or something, four and a half feet up on the higher slope, circumference in inches divided by pi gives you the diameter at breast height. So now if you want to purchase the trees, the calculation you will use is, you get the breast height, the diameter at breast height, and you multiply it by .5, which means in this calculation, 10 inches of diameter of breast height. So if you have to replace 10 inches of breast height, you would have to purchase five trees, and they have to be a minimum of two inches in diameter. Or you could buy bigger trees, but you wouldn't want to do that because they're more expensive, probably. So this is what this is all about. It's so fair, and towns, really sophisticated towns, are doing this. It's an absolute necessity, and I hope you see it that way and will approve this bylaw because I do believe we have worked it to death, and it is a good bylaw. So go for it, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, do we have any questions for Chairman, Karen?
Pretty well explained. There's too much left.
The, one, a couple of things I wanted to consider was the, what if there's fill activity during construction and it negatively impacts a tree that you're intending to preserve and protect?
Who's damaging the tree?
So, you know, how would we follow up to make sure that, you know, if a tree becomes a hazardous tree as a result of construction activities, you know, within the two years that we have?
Yeah.
You know, how do you, how do you monitor that and then rectify the loss of that tree?
So the intention of the bylaw is to obviously be monitoring that any trees that are to be protected during building activities have adequate measures in place to ensure the survival of the tree throughout the construction activity, and certainly up through the certificate of occupancy thereafter. If construction activity either indirectly or directly resulted in the death of a protected tree within the period of time that's specified in the bylaw, I can't recall exactly.
Two years.
Two years, David. The applicant would need to take corrective action as defined in the bylaw. Outside of that two-year window, we wouldn't be monitoring and enforcing it. The death of a protected tree subsequent to two years following a building activity, you know, I will, before I finish that statement, I will note that any activity that is like excessive or aggressive pruning of a tree that's subject to a tree protection plan or chemical herbicides or anything like that would be subject to enforcement under this bylaw. So the natural death of a tree subsequent to the two-year window, if not connected to any negligent behavior or otherwise detrimental behavior towards the protected tree, I would say is outside that two windows, and we wouldn't be monitoring at that point. But if it's due to activity that is negligent or intentional, and certainly within those two years, we're paying attention. But we, that is the definition, is that two-year threshold.
Let me add something else because I probably should have mentioned this. One of the issues that some people had was how do we enforce this? This is the language we have for enforcement. The Town Planner or his/her designee is hereby authorized to enforce all provisions of the Mashpee Preservation Tree Bylaw and may designate monitoring and enforcement agents to include, but not limited to, code compliance officer, the Town Planner, the Conservation Agent, Building Inspector slash Commissioner. So there could be a lot of people involved, and we'll see how it goes, and I know Evan will figure out the best way to do it.
I will note, I think, you know, there'll be lessons learned throughout the implementation of this if the town decides to approve the bylaw. But, you know, we'll learn But, you know, we'll learn willingly and readily. And again, I guess I'll just affirm that we wanted to focus this bylaw on building activity. So I get, you know, there is the potential in this bylaw, it's important to note, that you could approach the town for a tree preservation bylaw if you wanted to say, say it a vacant lot, undisturbed, raw wooded land, you want to develop that buildable lot. So you sought a tree preservation plan prior to obtaining your building permit. By the book, you approached the town, my department, you submit your application materials, you have a tree preservation plan approved, and you will go ahead and get your building permit and a certificate of occupancy, and say you convey that lot to a new homeowner. And three years go down the road, and they're not doing any building activity, but they want to remove the trees that were protected. It's, it's outside the window, and it's not connected to a building activity. So again, we want to incentivize the protection of these trees during building activities with the understanding that homeowners may eventually want to remove them outside of that window.
And I think, we think that this bylaw provides a balance between property rights and public interest in preserving the character of Mashpee.
I do see that, oh, I'm sorry, Chip.
Can I ask you this? So how does this relate to an individual who owns property along the shorelines, whether it be the ponds, or the lakes, or the, or the ocean? And if they have their house, look, they look over the water, are they allowed to cut some of those trees down and replace, put them in another location or supply trees for, in another location altogether?
Sure. So if you're in, if you're a coastal property or within, or within, near freshwater body, you are likely in a wetland jurisdiction, which this bylaw exempts you from. But if you wanted to remove or replace trees in those areas, you would be subject to the review and approval of the Conservation Commission.
And is there flexibility in that? It's, I mean, it sounds like we're protecting the trees, but if somebody has a house on the, on the waterline, they would like to take advantage of that, that few. Is there flexibility? Is, are you leaning to that to be okay for, intended to approach you on that or land?
Again, I think, Tom, if you're in a wetland jurisdiction and you want to remove a tree that is subject to review and approval by the Conservation Commission, any mitigation options, if allowable by the Conservation Commission, would be considered. So again, the provisions of this bylaw wouldn't impact those property owners.
Okay, that's what I wanted to add.
Yes, right in the exemption, if you're in the wetlands, coastal storm flowage, whatever, we don't have anything to do with that. This bylaw does not relate to that.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I, if I may, the only other thing I had to add was on the list of tree species that are protected, I didn't see the American chestnut or hickory. Mashpee was known to have nut-bearing trees, and, you know, when you speak of the elders, there's, there's fewer and fewer of those nut-bearing trees here in Mashpee. Some of them take, you know, I think over 100 years to get to the point where they bear fruit. They used to have that, and folks knew where they were within town. So I had requests that they add, you know, those to the protected species as there's so limited amounts of them now, and we'd like to see them better.
Absolutely, David. I guess I'll note for the board how we developed that list. I use two commonly referred to plant lists, one from the Cape Cod Cooperative Extension, and I'm blanking on the other. And I compiled every species on both of those lists. I am amenable to any tree species that the board feels should be adequately listed on here. It will ensure their protection as long as they're appropriately listed.
What are those trees, Dave?
I believe it was American chestnut and hickory are two that I'm familiar with. I'd have to talk to some of my elders to see if I'm missing anything, but I know those are the two that I hear them often speak of going around gathering nuts at particular times of the season.
Okay, so I'm pretty sure American chestnut and hickory are not invasive trees.
Right.
So if, if you do talk to your elders, maybe you could talk to, call Evan and, like, immediately?
We can do that.
Yes.
Sounds good. I think tonight's the night to execute the warrant, so I think you'll want to approach that with the town manager.
I don't want us to wait, Karen.
I'm not trying to hold up the article at all.
Pardon me?
I just wanted to put it out for consideration purposes afterwards, but I'm not trying to hold up the article.
Okay.
Understood.
It's a good document, all right?
First of all, I really appreciate your assistance and your hard work on this. I know you came to my office once or twice, and I know there have been some other folks that have assisted, including the Finance Director, and to get the terminology correct, and I appreciate your work. With that having been said, my only question is, and I'm just throwing it out there, do we really need an exemption for the town? And, and the reason why I ask is because what do I say when somebody says, you're telling me do as I say, but not as I do? And that is problematic for me.
It's well understood, sir. I would le, honestly, I don't know if the town needs an exemption. The inclusion of the exemption was solely at the suggestion of the DPW Director, who felt it was important.
I have the utmost respect for the DPW Director, and I'm sorry that I haven't had a chance to consult, but I don't think we need that.
I have a question.
Yes.
And it was brought to my attention about condo area. HOA and trustees have control over the parking lots, and how does that affect the tree?
Well, if they're, if they're undertaking a building activity, they would be subject to the provisions of this bylaw. And if the, the parking area, if it's on a lot, it would assume it would be as an accessory to some other use. And so if they have protected trees in the tree yard of the particular lot, and they're undertaking a building activity, they would be subject to the review and approval of the bylaw, just like everybody else.
Okay. So Taylor, any questions?
No, I like this iteration a lot. It's very, very clear. Thank you for putting it together.
Thank you. Good.
Now you can go on to your next one.
Sure. I don't have a copy of the current warrant in front of me. Do you mind if I borrow yours?
Yeah.
I'm prepared.
I guess I'll just start with, I did watch the presentation by Chair Bonvey and the Building Commissioner, and at first blush, I have absolutely, my department has no issues with the suggested changes to the bylaw that were contemplated by the Chair. I'll further note that the suggestions to the bylaw that were contemplated, and that I'm going to provide an opinion on now, were not reviewed by the Planning Board. And so I just wanted to make that clear. Relative to Article II, the flood plant, the fill prohibition, the floodplain, Ron, Chair Bonvey had noted that the final sentence of the first paragraph, 174-67 prohibitions, would potentially be problematic. I firmly agree. I believe I've stated that in my first presentation to you. I would recommend striking the sentence as recommended. Article three. Were there changes suggested in Article three here? I believe there was a consideration of including the words like lease or something like that.
Yes, he wanted to, Ron wanted to have a lease, a one-year lease. Is that the one-year lease one?
Yeah, 12-month requirement. It's just a recommended ad.
Yeah, okay. Oh, that's the, that's the Article five.
That's another one.
Were there any changes?
This is one here. Live in one, rent the other. I don't think there were any changes.
No changes to Article three. So obviously, I still stand by Article three. Article four, there was a discussion by Chair Bonvey and the Building Commissioner relative to the
Size.
Size ranges, which were proposed to increase from 350 to 450 and cap at 900. I believe Ron had contemplated that. He didn't understand the purpose for increasing to the 450. I can say that, you know, from, in my opinion, it wasn't a necessary change, but the Planning Board wanted, voted to submit the increase to the 450. It is my opinion, again, my professional opinion, that, you know, moving this bylaw from a special permit process to a buy right process was, the intention was to remove as much red tape for property owners to be able to
Do this.
Build the supply of these units. So I do not believe it would be prudent to provide artificial restrictions that would derogate from that outcome. And so, and again, in my opinion, I don't know if Ron had contemplated maintaining it at 350 or even reducing it to three. I certainly think maintaining at 350 makes a lot of sense. It certainly doesn't negatively impact this article. If 300 is even allowed by building code, I wouldn't say that would necessarily be problematic. The most important thing, in my opinion, is that we remove the ratio, the 40% of the gross floor area. That's been a problem for the Building Department, it's a problem for property owners. So whatever the minimum is, I think, is appropriately, is appropriate as discussed by Chair Bonvey. As long as we deviate from that 40% ratio to the fixed minimum maximum is best.
And let me add, on the 40% gross floor area, if you have a 5,000-square-foot house, then you can build a 2,000-square-foot ADU that is not in the contemplation of the Planning Board.
I think one question I had with regard to that was, you know, I think Ron was advocating to maintain the 300 to try to offer the smallest people, he'd mentioned tiny houses to be in, kind of a
Micro-labs and things like that?
Yeah, you know, and my thing is, when I did crunch some of the numbers, you know, if you're trying to build based on square foot, you know, of 300 feet, you'd be a little bit challenged to get something halfway decent in a, you know, 300-foot space, considering, you know, your typical spatial allotments for bathroom, bedroom, kitchen, dining room, you know. I guess his response was that, you know, they have spaces now that are kind of multipurpose, and that's was a large part of the micro, you know, mini houses and things, kind of planning. I'm looking for your opinion as to, you know, we want people to have homes they can be proud of. I don't want to have substandard housing for condoning that or encouraging that. So, you know, I'm looking for kind of a recommendation from your office and the both of you as to that.
Ron, Dave, I think Ron was talking about some kind of sophisticated 300-square-foot place. There's a new thing, it's probably not new to you, but I know he was talking about Atlanta, and I know about that. They're putting like, the bed is in the ceiling, and it's a wood frame, and it comes down over the couch at night. And then if you need an office, you've got like a wall that moves on wheels, and it opens up, it becomes your office, it's also your closet. So when you're not using your, you compress it, and there you have everything, and it looks nice. But we're not doing that kind of fancy, expensive building here.
I hope not.
Without getting into the hypotheticals about what they could possibly be, you know, this, I can speak from personal experience a little bit. I just built my mom an ADU. It's 586 square feet. It has a very sizable kitchen, it has a large bathroom, well bigger than my wife and I's. And I could fathom a situation where the size of that unit is even more reduced, and she could live comfortably, sustainably, within her means, and still have a place she could be proud of. I'm firmly confident in that. I believe that the, I know that the housing crisis on Cape Cod is severe, and we have no rental housing stock, or at least none to really be proud of, that provides any of the aforementioned necessities. And further, a unit, whether it be 300 square feet or 1,000 square feet, is bound by the provisions of the Massachusetts Building Code. So at whatever square footage the board feels is comfortable, that unit will be well constructed to code, safe, and sustainable for a person, either young or old, to reside in. My opinion, Evan Lehrer's opinion, is that 300 square feet is a, is, I think is a minimum that would allow the town to produce as many of these units as is feasible and provide a quality of life to its residents that you can feel proud of. That's my opinion.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think I'm good on that.
Taylor?
So were we, were reducing this? I'm just curious, what was, I hear what you're saying, I'm curious what the Planning Board's rationale was for increasing it. Address that.
I think, if I recall, Mary was talking from her experience, and she thought that 300 or 350 would be too small.
Okay.
And I was thinking, you know, like a two-car garage, a small two-car garage would be 20 by 20. That's 400 square feet. So picture a two-store, two, two-car garage. Could you, could you build something nice in 400 square feet?
I know many talented architects who could do wonderful work with 400 square feet. I feel confident that 350 is acceptable, or three, I can. But that was essentially the rationale, that Mary, in her experience as affordable, in affordable housing, felt that 450 would be more appropriate, and the board agreed with her assertion.
Thank you.
And so with this, with this draft, I think, you know, it's reading at the 450?
Explanation, the articles as we, not to be less than 350.
So it's changing the language to 350 is what we're going with?
Yeah.
Which I prefer not to go down to 300. That just seems too small.
I believe 350 is the current minimum. Am I wrong here?
Oh, you're right.
It's 300 according to I think the state allows for 300, if I'm correct, but ours is 350.
300.
Thank you.
I think, I recall that from the last conversation.
I have confirmations from numerous people that it is indeed 300 currently. I am not aware of any accessory apartments in Mashpee that have been permitted at 300 square feet. I guess I could note that. They're, they're not common. But there are also many small footprint homes in Mashpee that probably don't have the capacity on their lot to include a septic system in conjunction with a detached structure. So they're really working with their existing envelope, maybe they can get an addition on it. But those are the homes whose homeowners likely would benefit the most from the rental income they would receive, and, and probably could only accommodate a relatively small unit.
You can ask for, if you can get a 350 square foot, at least gives it flexibility. You know, 300 square feet is, is a small footprint overall, doesn't offer a whole lot of living space. The 350, even more, 400 square feet is, at least you have room to grow.
That's right.
Yeah. I'm not necessarily advocating for any particular minimum, I just think it's important that we shift away from the 40% ratio. I want to make sure that that's very clear. 450 is 450, it's acceptable. I think it's larger than is necessary. And I'll leave it at that.
Right.
And that's, again, my professional opinion.
Your point is good, Tom, because even if we reduce it to 350, many people may not buy, you know, build something that small.
Right.
But those few people who have a small footprint, who really need it, they would build it.
Yes.
So it, it allows for both.
Yes.
I mean, it's a minimum.
You can't go large. Normally, you can't go larger, you can go smaller.
Right. Are you comfortable with the 900 on the other side?
Yes.
So it's just a question of 350, 3, or 450?
It's up to you.
That was the focus of discussion, as I recall.
Yes.
Shall I move on to the final? Article, what am I on, five? I believe Ron had contemplated with the Building Commissioner the desire to insert some language that was about providing, providing a lease to the Building Department to ensure we're monitoring for compliance. Planning Department has no issues with that addition. I would certainly actually fully defer to the Building Commissioner in that regard, since that's his wheelhouse.
So that would need to be added here. Did we change? We did not, so we will change that wording in here.
If I may, I believe the wording was that a 12-month lease would be required, and the lease would be on file.
Right.
Uh huh.
And agreed. Yes.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Thank you, Select Board.
Thank you.
Good job, Chris.
I believe that is yours. Thank you for letting us deal with it. Thank you for letting us deal with it. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Does the board want to take action on this while they're here, just in case there's a last-minute question?
Okay. Do we want to take action on those articles? Evan?
Evan.
Evan.
Why didn't you stay? Why don't we take action on those?
I'm sorry. Say that again, please.
We're going to take action on those articles? Do you want to stay, just in case?
Oh, of course.
Okay, so Article two.
I wasn't really leaving, Carol. I was just tricking you.
One point.
And that one, we didn't have any changes to.
Yes, I go to...
Deletion of the final sentence in 17467.
Oh, I'm sorry, the final sentence. Okay. So do we have a motion to approve and add?
Motion to approve and recommend.
Second.
With that added?
With the added language.
With the deleted language.
The deleted language.
Final sentence of the first section.
First section, right. Michaela?
I think it has been deleted from this, but yes.
Oh, good.
Yes.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And make, yes.
Help, false answer. Right.
Article three?
No, it's Article four.
Yeah, three, I think we already approved.
Three was okay, Carol. Three was okay. Four is the one with the 350, and to eliminate the 40%, right? That's in the explanation.
Okay, let me, may I?
It says apartments made not less than 350 square feet and may not exceed 40% of the gross area floor.
Oh, that's right.
No.
So that, the purpose of the explanation?
Yeah.
Should retain the 40% language, only because we need to explain to voters that we're deleting that particular section and replacing it with the minimum and the maximum. So the, that, the reference to the 40% gross floor area should be retained in the explanation. Just the, the, this particular article, you need to come to a decision about what the minimum is. We've agreed at the 900, and so assuming your draft says 350 to 900, that would be...
No, their draft shows 450.
So you would be taking a motion, I suppose, to approve the article on the condition that the minimum be established at 350, not to exceed 900.
Any other questions? I need a motion.
Well, you need to figure out, are we going with the 450 or 300?
I think we decided 350. I think we decided to do the 350.
350, right.
I believe that Ron suggested 320. 320 was the number that Ron Bonvy mentioned. I think he said that was minimum, so that's why it came up. But...
It seems like a small footprint.
He had said the IRC, which I don't know what that means, but IRC said that's called, I guess...
350. I think I would go with Evan with the 350.
Again, I have no opinion on this one way or the other. You just need to establish a minimum.
Okay. David, 350?
350.
Okay, so let's vote on the 350 and then vote on the article. A motion for the three, change the 450 to 350 square feet.
As a minimum.
As a minimum, right. I need a motion.
Motion to approve and recommend.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, that's just to change that. Now I need a motion to add and recommend.
Well, we didn't, we've got to vote on the 350 now.
On the 350, right. David?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
And yes. Now...
A motion to approve and recommend Article four with the modification to, from 450 to 350 as a minimum, maintaining the 900 maximum.
Second. Michaela? Yes.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes. Article five. That's the one with the 12-month for the accessory apartment.
Do you need a motion to add that?
To add the 12-month lease.
Include the language.
To include the 12-month lease. I need a motion.
So motion to...
And I'm sorry, did that include enforcement through any town agent?
This would be enforceable under the building commissioner's, sir, as a zoning enforcement officer.
Thank you.
And I think his recommendation was to have it on file.
Right, so just to confirm, the 12-month, the minimum 12-month lease term is already included in the article. What the Chair of the Board of Appeals wanted to ensure is that a lease be provided to the building commissioner to ensure compliance with that section.
Right. So motion to add that a 12-month lease, a 12-month signed lease be on file.
I'll second the motion.
David?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And yes. Now I need to have an article approved and recommend.
Motion to approve and recommend Article five with the recently added language requiring the 12-month lease being kept on file.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And yes. Now the tree by law. Article six?
Motion to approve Article six as presented.
And recommend?
And recommend.
Second. Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work on this.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it.
Very good, John. Thanks.
Thanks, Carol.
You don't have to wait a year.
Okay, discussion with regard to articles submitted by Brian Whedon for the October 16, 2023 Town Meeting warrant. Brian?
One etu nata, oneina kan, nata sui moskota, nu Tomas masipiat, kanatai masipiat. I said, "Good day, my, good evening, my heart is true. I'm bare heart. I come from Mashpee and I live in Mashpee." Our ancestors would profess their honesty by saying, "One etu nata." This is the way our ancestors introduced ourselves, for we believe if you speak from a good heart, then you have good intentions and everything shall be pure. I also would like to thank that we don't have to relive the history from when the Mayflower arrived, and religion was forced upon our people, from the first Bible being printed in this country in the Wampanoag language to convert and colonize the quote-unquote savage or the Indians. Mashpee is a praying town, and was one of the reasons we have remained here, as this is our homeland, and continue to share it with you today. The explanation is, in 2008, at the town meeting, the town authorized the selectmen release titled to the tribe for the Old Indian Cemetery. This article was authorized. The select board released the parcels on map 68, block 13C, to the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe for the purpose of expanding the current cemetery. At the Town of Mashpee Special Town Meeting on April 7, 2008, Article two transferred the following eight parcels to the tribe, meeting house, cemetery, parsonage, museum, tribal headquarters, et cetera. In fact, at that time, Terry Cook was the Chair of the Select Board, along with the late John Cahalan, Dean of this Board, George Chucky Green, Wayne Taylor, and Don Myers. So maybe if we can get some background history, if allowed or needed, from them as well. This article will help to expand the Old Indian Cemetery located on the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe's reservation at 410 Meeting House Road, in support placing the parcel into trust on behalf of the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe for future generations of tribal citizens and families. Currently, the Old Indian Meeting House Cemetery is on a 12-acre lot, when the original deed for the meeting house included over 400 acres back in the late 1600s. In fact, this site was listed on the National Register of Historical Places in 1998, as it is the oldest Native American church in the eastern United States and the oldest church on Cape Cod. The Great Neck Woods Cemetery, located on Great Neck Road South, currently sits on a 19-acre parcel and was opened in 2002, and is currently owned and managed by the town. However, prior to this being the town cemetery, the Old Indian Cemetery was. We even have non-tribal members buried there from when it was a town cemetery, and the tribe continues to honor deeds from fellow town residents to date. The bottom line is that the Old Indian Cemetery is limited on space and open to not just tribal members, but spouses and community members. With the current tribal membership population almost around 4,000, and at the rate the tribe is burying people, we will soon run out of space. In fact, you can no longer buy a plot as you can today at the new town cemetery because of the limited amount of space we have. This article will not interfere with the IGA between the town and the tribe, because that agreement was the town's way to protect itself from the land suit in the title deed, which belonged to the South Sea Indians and tribe. In fact, that legal merits on this case have never been heard when the tribe sued the town in the 70s for illegal taking of this land. The IGA has been honored regardless of the legal arguments that can be made to challenge this document, along with the fact that this is a different day and age, both in the town and tribe. If the tribe was to take legal action for the parcel, that would be in violation of the IGA. However, following the process that was done in 2008 has no impact on the current terms in the agreement. In the IGA between the town and the tribe, on page five, section two, the tribe quote agrees, the last sentence at the top of the page reads as follows. Furthermore, nothing herein shall prevent or preclude the tribe and town from engaging in negotiations or transactions subsequent to the date of this agreement regarding the transfer of title to or interest in any town property upon terms mutually acceptable to the parties. If the town wishes to have this discussion, the tribe is more than willing. However, I file this petition as an individual citizen and taxpayer outside of my capacity as the Chairman of the tribe. Just like the select board is the governing body of the town, the tribal council is the governing authority for the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe, and any further conversations around the IGA should be had on a government-to-government level. When you introduce yourselves, we say "nu Tomas," which means my blood and my bones is from this land. It's not where you live, but where do your ancestors come from? Where is your place of origin? Most people have to travel there to their homelands, and we are blessed to say that we have been here for over 12,000 years on this very soil. When you eat from the land and gather from the land, you are the land and the land is you. We are proud to be members of the Wampanoag Nation. However, it is our distinct honor to be Mashpee Wampanoag tribal citizens. Finally, I would like to state that the tribe and the town have a great relationship and continue to act in good faith. You can see this in the invites to the town, to the town manager's office, for the recent historic visit of the Honorable Secretary of the Department of Interior, Secretary Deb Hollen, the first Indigenous woman to be appointed to a cabinet position and a proud member of the Laguna Pueblo Nation of New Mexico. She also previously served as one of the first Native American females in Congress, along with Congresswoman Sharice Davids, a member of the Ho-Chunk Nation. Or even the more recent visit with United States Senator Edward Markey and State Senator Susan Moran. In fact, the reason we have such a great relationship is because of the town manager and his willingness to be the peacekeeper and messenger, and continue to support, and now he would like the board to support us in these endeavors. Katabat Anamu, thank you all for allowing me to educate the community and speak to this matter on behalf of our ancestors and people. Let us work in the spirit of unity, as our new town seal represents a connected community that works together and not against one another. This is a different day and age in both the town and tribe, and welcome meaningful consultation when it comes to our beloved Mashpee.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions? I know it's a petition article. You're sure?
As we heard earlier, you know, folks had asked, you know, for, I think that the select board does carry some sort of influence, and for me personally, it's always good for us to take a recommendation on even petition articles, just to show, you know, what side of the fence we sit on on those, and would encourage the board to do so, even in these situations. I know they're not required to, but I think it just does reflect to the town citizens, you know, our position as select board members, to provide, provide them with insight if they happen to be on the fence. So that's all I would add.
Okay. I need to, I'm not sure. Do you have any questions?
No, I didn't know we were able to vote on this right now, but no, I don't have any questions.
Tom?
Well, I, I honestly would like to have the, the town vote on this. I know you're looking for the board's vote, but I'd like to abstain from that, and I'd like to see what the residents really want, what their decision is. Not my decision, because they look, they want to know what my decision is or where we stand as a board. And I'd like to hear, to be honest with you, where the residents stand at this stage.
Something to offer at this point. As I said, I didn't know that you were calling for a motion to vote. That was my hesitancy. I think we heard a lot of, a lot of residents, from a lot of residents this evening, and we've also received letters, very supportive letters, from local spiritual leaders who represent, they suggest that although they don't represent their entire parish or synagogue, that they believe that members of their parish or synagogues would also be fully supportive. I found those letters and all of the statements that we've heard tonight really compelling. So for that reason, if you want a motion, I would like to make the motion that the select board approve this to move forward.
So you make a move, a motion to approve and recommend?
Approve and recommend. Thank you.
I need a second?
I would second that.
Okay.
And as, as a matter of full disclosure, for the general public in the Town of Mashpee, I do sit on tribal council. I do sit on the select board. It was, it was suggested that there was a conflict of interest. I don't see this as an adversarial situation. I don't, I fail to see the conflict of interest. So just as a matter of record, I did file a disclosure statement stating that I do sit on both sides of the two governments with the town clerk for a matter of public record, and where this is just a request to authorize the town, the select board, to transfer lands. It's a, it's a request, and it's a citizen's petition. I, I fail to see any sort of conflict in this situation. If there was any form of negotiations or anything, I would do the right thing and recuse myself from that situation. But at this point in time, I see no reason to recuse myself at this time. Thank you.
So you second the motion?
I second the motion.
Roll call vote. Michaela? Yes. Tom?
Yes.
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 Thank you. I also just wanted to note that the FinCom did recommend this by a vote of five to one as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Discussion with regard to an article submitted by Talia Landry for the October 16 Town Meeting warrant. Talia?
Thank you again for giving me this time on the agenda tonight. It is much more, I guess, comforting to be able to speak about all of this with more than three minutes to discuss everything. And I would like, love to get your feedback and any sort of questions, because I know that this is a big article with a lot of parcels. As you see with the map that I gave to you, the three parcels are 35, 415, and 409, that are numbered there on the map. And as I stated in the petition article, the reason for this is to recreate essentially a traditional Wampanoag village. And this effort is in with an educational grant that was administered to the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe Education Department, through the Department of Education, through the Office of Indian Education. And this grant has been going on for about two years now. It's the American Indian in Resilience in Education Grant. So there's a lot of objectives and initiatives within this grant, and this is just one portion of that. So when we first got the grant, we were focusing a lot on our internships, our job creation, a lot of different aspects that we put within writing the grant that will help our Native students become successful within the American public school system. So within this, our first effort to do this pre-contact home site, I created a cultural advisory council that is composed of traditional elders, Wampanoag... But when the town of Mashpee had the authority over the Mashpee Indian Museum, that's at 414 Main Street, they also had a grant that they obtained that was an extension off of the museum that was created at this 12 acres location that I am presenting again today. And within those efforts, this, some of the same people that sat on, you know, that worked that SEDA program to build those traditional structures are sitting on my cultural advisory council today. I look to them for a lot of the general knowledge that we need in order to get back to what that environment was like before all of the development and kind of the things that were environmental challenges that we're facing today. So not only is it just for education and tourism and for cultural revitalization, it's also conservation, sustainability, its efforts to, you know, clean the water that it abuts. I'm not sure how familiar you are, but as far as the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe being a federal sovereign government, we are exposed to a lot more resources that allow us to take care of certain things. When we have more assets and that, that asset abuts the water, then we are able to access funding to help within those clean water initiatives. So that's pretty important within this project. Another big important thing in this project is just reintroducing Indigenous plants and landscapes, so we can get back to that natural state that Mashpee used to be. As you can see in some of these pictures, we've been starting the construction of what we would see within this educational village site for the summer home site. This is just one of the structures. And within that, we've been getting back out there and harvesting a lot of the traditional materials that we haven't touched in years and seeing the environment that those materials are in. It's very educational, and it's kind of nerve-wracking to see where the world is going to, but we are getting our hands out there. We are touching these plants and different resources again. We're collecting seed, we're propagating seed, we're trying to really help what has come of Mashpee. Through this effort, there's, it's all conservation, it's all to complement what the natural landscape is, so there's not crazy excavations. We move around the natural landscape. We will, you know, it is an important task to take away invasive species, so that is in our mind. We're also already working with local and state agencies to help us reintroduce their certain species and identify those certain species that will help the surrounding environment within itself. And I really would like to get to any questions, if you guys have any, for the purpose of tonight and in efforts to hopefully get a recommendation from this board.
Start, Michaela?
Yes. Thank you so much, and I'm glad you had some time to show us all of this. I fully support the concept and the space for a living pre-contact Wampanoag museum. I have a couple of questions, maybe you could help me with them. One question I have has to do with access. I know people, how, how would you access the museum itself, and how would that keep access open to, say, the playgrounds and the beach?
So within this grant, this is just the first few phases to construct the grant. So that's why, within our planning, we have plans, kind of, we're starting to initiate the five-year plan. And as you see with the three parcels, the reason why we went, are asking for the transference of the three parcels is to have those two parcels that are close to Main Street, that are commercially zoned, to be able to be opened, you know, for those discussions of how it can be accessed in a better way. That is all, that's different from that pond access right there. And there's, there is no intention to have limited access at all by any means to, to the village site and to, you know, the waterfront property and the parking lot as well. This is a, it's a community effort, not only within the tribal operations, as we have many different departments, as the town does, as Rosen Grounds and Security and Tribal Police, they're all within these efforts of this. We've also been in discussions, excuse me, with the Recreation Department Director to be able to identify some needs within this, within this particular area, because there has been some needs identified. She doesn't have proper coverage to maintain the gates, therefore, there's many non-Mashpee residents coming into the facilities and creating a lot of public and safety hazards. So we've been doing what we can with volunteering to help manage that gate. We've also been doing marketing research along with that, so we understand the demographic that is coming in and out, as well as how it's easier to access, as well as needs, like the trash pickup and removal, and those sort of things that come into play with this sort of transference. And again, to your point, the museum would be essentially separate from like the recreation area, and we are identifying different ways to do that through, you know, natural barriers and stuff like that, but also within our security system. And when we seek more funding, those are the certain things that are being put into place.
May I ask another? Okay. I'm curious, as an educator, I see the value of this, I see the value of it to our schools, our youth, and the community as a whole. I wonder if you could talk a little bit about the relationship you anticipate with the schools and, and what you've done to work on that?
So when we first received this grant, it was our, within our due diligence to secure partnerships, district partnerships. So as you can see on one of these poster boards, I do list our partnerships, our formal and our informal, and those are just educational institutions that we have been working with for the past two years. And within our formal partnerships, there, there's context within there that shows that the, within this working relationship of how we'll be doing this cultural programming, but also exposing the educators and the peers and students of non-Natives to come and partake in this. As you can see in some of those pictures, this is cross-generational. So it not only hits our K through 12 students, but it hits our young adults that we're having a hard time keeping in the community, and it's also hitting our elders. We're looking to our elders for that traditional ecological knowledge, as well as just memory of what it used, of what Mashpee used to be. And then we're teaching our K through 12 students through smaller programming, as well as training young adults in these traditional skills to not only, not only work the exhibits, but to be able to teach the youth as we go on. So within these partnerships, it's crucial for us to maintain these, the community connectedness in order to fulfill this extensive project, because like I said, it's not just the tribe and containing the, the cultural education for the tribe, but it's this understanding. Remember again that the, the grant is the American Indian Resilience in Education, and that resilience in education calls for a common understanding with the public school system and the Native students that are within it. So it's not only our job to, you know, give that, those programs to help the self-identity and cultural awareness for those students and support, you know, we give academic support, dual enrollment, you know, driver's ed, those sort of things. But it's also important for us to give that, the support to those educators, because they're essentially the community, and where the health of our community goes is in everyone's hands. It's not just within our Native students, but for everyone's understanding and for us to move forward as a connected community, this is important for us to do together within all of our different departments, not only with the education systems, but within the town as well and tribe.
Thank you.
Tom, any questions?
I'm trying to familiarize myself with the, with the plan in front of me. Where, where are you looking for the headquarters? There's no indication as to where the layout is and how it's, how it's used. Does it, how does it affect the, the lake?
Adequant park.
Yes. Does, how, is there a positive or negative effect? Is it, is that going to remain in existence for residents to use as a beach?
Yeah, so it's definitely a positive effect. It will still remain open for residents. How we, you know, come up with the, the system as far as we just utilize the same beach stickers, or if the tribal, you know, Adequant Park wanted their own sort of beach sticker. But there, like I mentioned before, there's no intention to close this off to the public. It's very much to keep it a recreational area. It's just to add that value of that traditional village aspect and keep, and try and produce natural barriers around the museum-like park, and to actually use the landscape of what's actually there to place, let's say, you know, the summer home and then our longhouse and our different exhibits that are all natural things. We're not, we're not, essentially, we're not going and buying cement and fabricated materials. We're going out into the same woods and collecting those materials to harvest to create this, to create this thing, this village, excuse me. And essentially, it is a, it's a community healing as well. Traditionally, the convergence of two waters is a very spiritual place for us. Not only does the tribe need this healing, but the town needs this healing as well. So bringing this sort of activity and life back to this property is just going back to where it was thousands of years ago, but then even, you know, 40 years ago, 60 years ago, when it was, it was a baseball field and then the community gathering place. This is essentially just bringing it back to what it used to be and using the resources for what they are, as well as cleaning up the surrounding environment, as I mentioned before, such as the water. As, we have initiatives right now to even, you know, clean up the riverways and work on the runs with the conservation, with the, with the town departments, within our own natural resource department with the tribe as well. We have youth groups that are initiating rights of nature passages to, in order to protect those natural beings within those waterways. So this is all a preserving our homeland's efforts and community connectedness to keep this going and to really heal what has happened throughout these years and make sure that we don't go back to that, that controversy as far as tribe against the town. And it's really to come together so we can do this not only for our, you know, our, look to our seven generations before us, but for future seven generations next, ahead of us.
Yes, I understand and I agree with you. I, I'd like to see a common use, but I thought there was a common use of the land between the tribe and the, and the residents, the Mashpee residents and all residents, Mashpee residents. But is, is that beach going to be available to the public at all times, under control of the, the town of Mashpee and the parking areas?
It would essentially, those negotiations would have to come after this article is what comes of this article. But essentially, as I mentioned before, we're already in discussions with, you know, the Mashpee Rec Department Director and the different facilities that run this, so it's a smooth transference, whether that comes right away or if it comes within so many years of us co-managing it. But this is all within efforts to make sure that the recreational part of this stays recreational in a way that's effective and safe, because right now, it's not safe under the town of Mashpee. They don't have the resources to man the gates. They're letting non-residents come in and you, and take up the parking spaces and do certain things, and we've been there to help within that. So we're really using this as a partnership. And there's no intention to leave Mashpee residents out, let alone anything else in, or to take over or put gates up. It's not our way.
But it would be tribal control?
Essentially, yes, but it would not be land and trust.
Could I ask a clarifying question of the town manager? Mr. Town Manager, could you, because the way I understand this is, if this is approved by a two-thirds vote, what it does is allow us to negotiate into an agreement that's agreeable to both parties and move forward in that way, if we can do that. Is, is that, is that accurate?
Yes, the town meeting vote would be a vote to authorize, and then it does not compel the board to act, but it certainly authorizes you to act. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention that I went down to the government center of the tribe and I had a meeting with the chair and other individuals, including Ms. Landry and also the chief, and it was of great historical value to me personally. I learned a couple of things that I didn't know about back in the sixties and so on and so forth. So it's always nice to, I guess, get that perspective. And I also wish that we had had an opportunity to have our five o'clock meeting, which we had to cancel, because unfortunately, the chair, our chair, the board chair, had to depart for Hawaii. But those discussions were continuing.
I ask that because I understand the questions you're asking, and I think they make good sense and they're important ones. I'm just wondering if we'll get to those and find in negotiations that it's not all set in stone. That's why I was asking that question, because I think your questions are important.
As do I. I mean, it was just, this is a beautiful beach, and without that beach there, that we don't, the residents don't have a lot of accessibility to that, the pond itself.
And it's also in need of a lot of cleaning and a lot of monitoring and a lot of traditional ecological knowledge that will help to get back to that point. So that's another important thing to remember. It's not, again, that's not our value system, that's a Western value, to keep people out. And none of our lands is somewhere that you do not go into, you cannot go into. We have reservation signs just to show you that you're on a different jurisdiction, but we do not have any gates or fences, so just a reminder.
One thing I'd like to contribute is, you know, this project, if successful, it has a huge opportunity on multiple fronts, to educate the general public. I think we've heard from Mr. Richard DeSoga and Ava Costello, that, you know, it lies within the historic district, which will bring attention to our historic area here in the center of town. Mashpee has a unique history. We'd love to share that story with everyone. And so, looking at people that come in to the town, they are always wondering, a lot of the people that I meet and come across ask about, you know, where can I find out more about the town and tribe's history? And, you know, so to highlight that historic district and kind of have our focal point, like, a project such as this, I think would be beneficial to the town and bring a lot of tourism. The other thing is that, having worked at Plymouth Plantation as a young person, a lot of our tribal members worked there at a, different points in time. And for myself personally, I can only speak for myself, but it was a huge learning experience to be able to go to work and get paid to learn about your culture. And it did a lot for me in choosing which direction I wanted to go as far as a cultural educator. And everyone that worked there kind of launched their careers and went on to be cultural keepers and educators and things. But at the same time, they had a really robust program at one time. There's been contention with the program and kind of going downhill from what it once was. And until we tell our own story, somebody's always going to be telling a story for us. And so, for the tribe to be able to have a project like this where they can integrate, you know, the school, the young people have more flexibility and control over the programming and things, I think it would be really beneficial to the tribe and its youth. You know, it, it makes me feel good to see the town and tribe come together and work together. You know, as Chucky Green stated to us once before at a meeting, you know, he'd like to see the one Mashpee where, you know, the tribe and town work together. I guess that's kind of my hope in all this, is that we do find a way to support each other and each other's initiatives. But I do see a lot of value in this project. The Plymouth Plantation, before it was Plymouth Patuxet, allowed for a lot of tribal members to work there, mothers and children and things. One of the constant issues with that location was our, some of the young people trying to get up there, single moms and things with kids and things, to get up there to Plymouth. Having one here, I think, would be much more beneficial to actual, you know, folks living in town. So that's why I am favorable to the project. I think the SEDA program was through the Department of Labor. It helped get people to work and things. It's- and educators and things. But at the same time, they had a really robust program at one time. There's been contention with the program and kind of going downhill from what it once was. And until we tell our own story, somebody's always going to be telling a story for us. And so for the tribe to be able to have a project like this where they can integrate, you know, the school, the young people have more flexibility and control over the programming and things, I think it would be really beneficial to the tribe and its youth. You know, it makes me feel good to see the town and tribe come together and work together. You know, as Chucky Green stated to us once before at a meeting, you know, he'd like to see the one Mashpee where, you know, the tribe and town work together. I guess that's kind of my hope in all this, is that we do find a way to support each other and each other's initiatives. But I do see a lot of value in this project. The Plymouth Plantation, before it was Plymouth Patuxent, allowed for a lot of tribal members to work there, mothers and children and things. One of the constant issues with that location was some of the young people trying to get up there, single moms and things with kids and things, to get up there to Plymouth. Having one here, I think, would be much more beneficial to actual, you know, folks living in town. So that's why I am favorable to the project. I think the Seda program was through the Department of Labor. It helped get people to work and things. It's an initiative that I think started back in the, in the 70s. You know, folks are familiar with Paula Peters Mashpee 9. That tells a whole story about the project that didn't quite make it and the reasons why. And to have folks working on this project from that time period is great. You know, that, I just wanted to add that and hope that the board support the project based on those merits.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
I've been getting a lot of questions on this, that the land is valuable. And we're looking right now to undertake the sewer project. And a lot of questions is, and you're going to have to sell it to the town, to the towns' people, that the land is valuable, and it's valuable to you for your project that you're doing. But we also are out there looking for revenue to support the sewer. So what, how would you present that to the townspeople?
I mean, I can only present it from the aspect that I come from as a resident that has lived here my entire life and that is culturally connected to the land here. We all have the same initiatives here, the residents as well. There are many different other means to assess different, you know, assets and land and such like that. And also, you know, the tribe as a sovereign nation, that is what, you know, the IGA's purpose is to help this, you know, create this partnership. So wherever we can see within help within that, that's above me a little bit, you know, that's an intergovernmental conversation. So all I can say is what the, the purpose for this and what it's going to do for our future generations. I mean, I haven't been working on the sewage as long as you guys have to, you know, for you to get to a point of still trying to have to find money and it's still not being done. So, I mean, I think that's more of a question for you guys rather than myself.
Well, it's the taxpayers that are going to pay the bill.
As I said, with intergovernmental negotiations, I'm sure there will be something. As you know, within the transference, it just says transfer, it doesn't really-
I'm just telling you, this is what I'm getting to. And you're going to have to sell it to the townspeople, because you want the town to gift the land. And there's a value-
I just put the transference, so it's not really put in black and white what that means.
But I just want, I just want you to know what's out there.
And I'm letting you know too.
How long is land?
So within the transference as well, within the negotiations, those sort of, you know, that's our point within, this is just to, you know, authorize this for what comes of it after, of how that's done-
That's the negotiations, yes.
In order to, you know, compensate for whatever you are saying as far as the asset of, you know, as it precludes to the wastewater. But as I said before, that's something that's been going on for years as well, to stop a project that has been going on for years before even that, before the development happened to the point where we need this wastewater, is also an important issue and that we'll be talking about a lot.
I agree. Thank you. Any other questions?
No, I guess the only questions. I don't know where the boundary lines are, it's kind of difficult to see as to all the businesses that exist there now and if there'll be any negative effect on Knockabout Brewery, all of those.
Well, that would be, I think, negotiations after.
Right. I mean, I know that, but those are the important things that I'm looking at as well.
So I'm not sure what would be negatively affecting the Knockabout Brewery, other than more people in exposure to the Knockabout Brewery, considering we're bringing in-
Things of that nature, just, it's very narrow, you know it as well as I, probably better than I do. Those are the questions that I'll have to come forward to.
Your presentation was great.
Thank you. If I may, I think we're all going to have questions as we work together.
Yes, no question.
But it's certainly, it's an incredible opportunity in so many ways, and educationally it would make such a difference.
Education is the key.
Yeah. This is, you know, like I said, this is not just, you know, for our native youth, it's for the entire community as well as educators, but it's also for the environment as well, because where this has led us to this point, we do have to take a stand and we have to start doing something. And the tribe has been stepping up and co-managing a lot with the town in those efforts. So please remember that when you're thinking about assets and value and stuff like that. What we bring to this is a lot more value than, you know, the American commerce that you guys are working off of.
Any other questions?
I do not.
You're good? Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you calling for a motion at this point?
You can, if you want.
Okay. I move that we approve and recommend, I don't know if I have the wrong number, Article 12.
I would second that.
Okay, roll call, Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
No, not until a later date, I need more information.
I make no recommendations at this time. David?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, discussion and approval of recommendation of articles of the draft four of the October 16, 2023 Town Meeting warrant. So we have, I think, Article 1, which is to see if you will vote and appropriate the sum of $7,500,000 for the planning and design of the wastewater treatment and affluent recharge incentives.
Motion to approve and recommend?
Second.
Okay, roll call?
Yes.
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 Any questions or anything? No, everybody's good on that? Okay, we did the flood plain, we did Article 4, we did 6, 9, Page 17. Okay, to see if the town will vote to authorize and empower the select board to prepare a plan to lay out and define Godfrey Road of Article Circle, submitted by a petition article. Do I have a motion to approve and recommend Article 9?
Well, this works, we don't have to approve it, we just have to-
Recommend.
Take a position.
Take a position.
Whether we support it or not, I guess is the ask.
Recommend or make no recommendation or?
Make no.
You can recommend, not recommend, or take, make no recommendation.
Okay. So do I have a motion? No motion?
No.
Okay, so Article 10, to see if the town will vote, that was the-
You already did that.
We did that one, okay. And Article 12, so now we need to execute the warrant.
Let me just-
Oh, wait a minute.
Article 11, even though it's intended.
It was removed. It was removed by the petitioner.
No.
But are you making a recommendation?
So it's the same thing, it's either recommend, not recommend, or no recommended action.
Okay.
No recommendation.
Okay, no recommendation.
No recommendation.
That's the motion?
It's been removed, right?
No. Not at this point.
No, right.
I thought it had been.
Yeah. All of the petitioners are going to have to withdraw, and that hasn't happened yet.
So do I have a motion to not recommend Article 11?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, David?
Could you repeat how you worded that again?
To not recommend.
To not recommend.
She's removing it.
Well, she hasn't-
Well, one, and I'm not being disrespectful, I'm just saying, all of the, the lead petitioner may have indicated that, but not all of the petitioners have indicated that. So again, you could vote to recommend, not recommend, or take no action.
I'd prefer to take no action myself.
And there would be, and there would be no recommendation by the board if you did that.
Motion to amend the previous motion to take no action and provide no recommendation.
Second.
On Article 11.
Okay, Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Yeah, clean that up.
So that was on the amendment, we still have to take a motion.
Take the motion to. You want to do it?
The motion to take no action.
Motion to take no action.
Second.
Roll call?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Now I need a motion to execute. Just check with Terry to make sure we've done everything.
Motion to approve and execute the town warrant as presented with recommendations.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, David?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. Any liaison reports?
ELC, we'll have our second meeting this Wednesday. Our second meeting, yes, we finally got up and running.
Good. Anybody else?
I don't.
Okay, water quality updates? Anybody? No? Okay. Town manager updates?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Then I just need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Sorry, roll call, David?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Tom? And I'm a yes, thank you, everybody.